Actually talk to you all about the program of studies and Mr. Fox's absence. So I'd like to introduce to you all Leslie Detwiler, who is the Director of Guidance at Warren County High School, and she's going to take you through some of the highlights of the program study.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, so I understand that I am here to present some of the highlights and changes that the 2021-2022 Program of Studies has. So, um, there are some wording changes that have occurred in the beginning portions of the Program of Studies. Um, one example is like report cards. They, it has been changed to reflect that we now send report cards electronically instead of mailed to all of our students. Um, there's also changes that include like other class ranking and to reflect that only, um, particular Lord Fairfax Community College courses that are being used for high school diploma requirements are included in a student's class rank. Um, another change is weighted grades. So currently AP classes and those with an associated AP exam are currently weighted. Um, so for the, uh, 2021-2022 school year, but technically it starts with the class of 2023, dual-enrolled on-campus courses are also going to be weighted credit. This helps to provide some equal opportunity for weighted grades at both schools. Um, and these courses are equivalent to those classes of the AP courses that we are already weighting. So kind of a simple example of this is if a student takes AP Language for their junior year English, they get credit for English 111 and 112 through Lord Fairfax Community College. If a student were to go on campus and take English 111 and 112, currently right now, they would not get weighted credit. So this is making that equivalency, um, and some equal opportunity between the two schools. Some of our dual-enrolled courses that occur on our high school campuses are also going to have weighted credit. This includes, um, Anatomy at Skyline High School, Biology at Warren County High School, World Civilization at Skyline High School, and then also a change for our English 12, our dual-enrolled English 12. Those courses will also, uh, carry weighted credit. We have also removed the requirements for the cohorts entering ninth grade in 2017 and 18 due to the fact that that class is the class that's graduating now. Um, and then some new courses. So Coding and Digital Applications is a new class that's going to be introduced at the middle school level. That's to go along with some of the all, um, computer classes that they already have. Criminal Justice 1, uh, this is going to be a part-time position for 2021-22 with the hope to expand to include Criminal Justice 2 for the 22-23 school year. And that's going to be, um, taking place at Blue Ridge Technical Center. African-American History is a history elective that is going to be offered through Virtual Virginia for the 2021-22 school year. Advanced Biology is going to be offered at Warren County High School, uh, with a dual enrollment option. Music Artistry is going to be offered at Skyline High School, again with a dual enrollment option. And then AP Literature, which is also known as English 12, we're going to change that name to Dual Enrolled English 12, and that will take place at Skyline High School. Um, but the students that are eligible at Warren County High School will be able to take that class as well, and that's something that we incorporated this school year already. Um, it also just kind of helps reduce the number of syllabi that the teacher has to follow. Some classes are now going to be offered at both high schools, Guitar Methods 2 and Journalism particularly. Photo Journalism is now going to be called Publication. And then finally, Sports Medicine 2 at Warren County High School will also have a dual enrollment option with it. So those are the changes and highlights for the 2021-22 Program of Studies. Do you have any questions?
This is first read, first, first read. Give it a chance to digest it a little more, like next week or two weeks from now.
Hopefully Mr. Fox will be that kind of. Thank you.
You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Next up will be English Language Curriculum Review Committee, Ms. Rudisil.
Good evening again. The School Division would like to convene a committee to review curriculum materials to best serve our English language learners. We are asking the Board to approve the proposed members of this committee as presented. I would be happy to answer any questions.
You're, you're talking now.
No, I'm, I'm ready.
Oh, no.
But now I'll tell right now.
Good body.
Trying to open it up. Our move that proposed members of the English Learners Curriculum Review Committee be approved as presented.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing done, motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Rudisil. Uh, approval of temporary instructional assistant position for the remainder of 2020 and 2021 school year, Mr. Smith.
Uh, thank you. Um, just in an effort to provide, uh, some additional instructional coverage throughout the division, a request is made to create temporary instructional assistant positions for the remainder of this school year to assist in several areas. One would be in positions that we are, uh, unable to fill with substitutes. Um, uh, and some of the other also would be transitioning forward to more in-person, uh, type, uh, learning. Uh, the funding for these temporary positions would come from, uh, a budgeted position that we, we, we have, the coordinator position that where a lot of those duties have already been reassigned. Um, funds in this line item itself, we, with benefits and salary is $104,070. The number of candidates that we would hire really would depend on, uh, several things. One would be the number of the need that we would have of, um, instructional assistance to, to help with, uh, coverage, uh, those type of things. Also, the one thing that we run into with the current pandemic, just the number of qualified candidates, uh, who would be available to, uh, to do this. And obviously the, the amount, um, a lot. And, um, so I'm just asking for us to be able to have access to a position that is currently budgeted to be able to create some temporary positions, really for this semester, to kind of move coverage forward as we kind of go through this pandemic.
How many positions would that be, roughly, Mr. Smith?
Um.
Just ballpark.
I would say a minimum of six.
Okay.
But, uh, probably it could be a maximum of eight, eight to ten, or somewhere in that ballpark.
So, so a major impact in the schools?
Um, it could be a major impact in schools, and even with those numbers, uh, the allotment amount that's there, we, we honestly, with those numbers, we really do not come close to, to that dollar figure that's there. It just have the availability to be able, if we were to find the candidates, and we did have a, a higher need with staff being out and those type of things with COVID situations, that we would have the flexibility and availability to, to, to get people in there to help cover.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So if we allotted the 104,070, you're saying that probably that would meet any need that, that we might have?
Yes, I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of easily meet.
That's, that, it would, it would help us out.
I just, well, I just didn't know if, if, if captain at 104. And I guess you could come back and ask for more if necessary, but, um.
Yes, we wanted to be able to have a budgeted amount of money of, of, of something that we currently have there that's already been budgeted, it's not an expense, um, and that's a line item that we could work out of for, uh, this particular, uh, purpose.
This is just for the remaining, what, four and a half classes?
This is just for the remainder of this, uh, starting now through the end of the school year, just to be able to, to cover those hard-to-fill spots and the vacancies and, uh, in those unfilled sub-type positions. And also, as we, uh, as we look at moving to more in-person, uh, type learning, uh, in order to do that, the people that we've moved around from various different schools, they would have to be stationary at their school, they wouldn't necessarily be able to move back and forth. The flexibility would be removed there.
So as we increase students, we may have the space at a school, but we don't have the staff at the school if we get an increase in one or two or three students. They cause us to open up another room because of space requirements. Uh, but then again, as Mr. Smith mentioned, you know, we have the, uh, just one of our biggest struggles this year has been, has, has been our staffing. And so this would just help to alleviate some of the burden that, that our principals are faced and with, and what Mr. Smith is faced with as they try to make sure that we have, we have coverage within our buildings on a daily basis. We're making it work, but it's been, you know, there's, there's been some days that we've crossed our fingers, to be honest with you. But they've been, they've done a great job, the principals have done a great job with making it work. Uh, but this would just really help us to, to alleviate some of those expressers and to give us more hands-on training, I'd say.
Anything else you want to say? Have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Warren County School Board approves the creation of temporary instructional assistant positions for the remainder of the 2021 school year to assist in filing unfilled, uh, substitute positions, assisting in transitioning to move in-person learning and at a cost not to exceed the allotted $104,070.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, hearing done, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Report on the update to the 2020, 2021 Warren County Public School Reopening Plan, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
At our last meeting, we, we, uh, brought forth to the Board about the option of trying to increase our in-person days for our middle school students based upon what we, what we noticed from our middle school students on our benchmarks compared to, to our elementary schools. And, and that we knew that going into that, that there would be some struggles and that our goal has always been to try to increase days when we could. And, you know, that was mentioned when our reopening plan was first brought forth to the Board, that we would continually look and try to increase days when we could for our students because studies show that students being in that chair, in that classroom, in front of that teacher, that's where learning, that's where you're going to get your biggest gains. Uh, so we have continued to work, and, and at that meeting, you asked to, to have a survey of AS Road because that, you know, making this plan work because of transportation would require a start time change and end for one of our schools. And AS Road was, was targeted as that school because of the number of buses that were needed to make this transition happen. And so I have with this tonight, Ms. Lori Weyman, and, uh, after that meeting, the next day, I contacted her to, to conduct the survey. And I think it'd just be best for you to hear from her as far as her survey, the process that they went through. And I, they've done a great job with their survey and reaching out to parents, a lot of phone calls, so, Ms. Weyman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, so we did, as Dr. Ballinger said, we talked about it after that school board meeting and just worked together with Dr. Ballinger and Mrs. Rudisil and Mrs. Shepherd to come up with a survey to ask some questions of our families, see how it would impact them, see if that was even feasible for them to make that change this late in the school year. So first of all, I'd like to thank them for their help in, you know, narrowing down the questions and what we really needed to get to in that survey of our parents. Um, and also to our families just for considering this schedule change. Um, at this point in the year, we appreciate their flexibility through all of the different changes they've had to make this year, just with COVID mitigation strategies. Um, so we really do appreciate that. We have a good partnership with our families. It's a very small school and it is very family-oriented, and that's always our goal is, it is not just that big picture to us. We really strive to try to meet the needs of all of our families, so I do appreciate them working with us through this. Um, it would have a minimal impact on our staff. Like we said before, their schedule would really just change from 7:15 to 3:15 as opposed to currently 7:30 to 3:30. So our staff is really not as impacted by this. Their planning time moves to the afternoon instead of the morning. So it really always was about those families. Um, and we appreciate their consideration of adjusting their personal schedules, their work schedules, just to allow those middle schools, students an extra day per week in person. So just a little bit about us, I know we mentioned it last time, but we do have 252 students attending our school this year, and 198 of our students are in-person. So we have about 78% of our students that are with us in person, and we actually have quite a few that have reached out to us about coming back in person for the second semester. So, um, I think that just speaks to their trust of us and them knowing that we'll work with them to try to make whatever hap, can, we can do, you know, to make it, uh, you know, a good transition for their students. So with that said, our first survey was anonymous, just to get, you know, that nitty-gritty reaction and the truth from everyone. So we had 102 responses to that, and 52% said they could make that schedule change, and 48% said they could not. So again, when we're talking about 198 students, that's a huge concern for us. Um, we don't want to lose those in-person students. So, so what we did after that is we actually had our teachers reach out to every family again. So we basically did a follow-up survey to that. Um, those first responses were mainly, you know, that it was just such an adjustment. They didn't think it could work for their family, just childcare, transportation, the, the idea of their child being up and ready to learn an hour earlier in the morning. So that concerns some parents as well. So on our follow-up survey, um, we reached out, like I said, I had each teacher call each family. We just had the teacher of the oldest sibling in our school reach out to the family so that they weren't getting multiple calls and, and feeling overwhelmed by that. And with that personal contact, 81% of our families said they could make the change. 81% of those, 148. Now, we still had about 13 families, I believe, that we left multiple messages with, sent a note home, said, hey, call us, we'd like to get your input, that weren't able to respond to us, um, before tonight. So of those 148 responses, 27 of the responses, um, were families that did not think that they could make that change to their schedule. So again, childcare, just the change, figuring out work, um, and just, you know, concerns about disturbing their child's routine in an already challenging year were most of the comments we had there. So I reached out to each of those families individually, and with Dr. Ballinger and Mrs. Rudisil and Mrs. Shepherd, we had kind of brainstormed what could be some solutions that we could help offer them or accommodations that we could make to help those families and also to help our middle school students be able to get that extra day in. So what we were able to come up with, um, were, you know, would a 7 to 7:30 drop-off help you? Because we know that some people with their schedules, maybe right now they're working 7 to 3, and they would need to switch to 6 to 2, or something of that where it might need to be an even earlier drop-off than 7:30 to help them out. Um, two, two students would need that accommodation. So that would mean we just need a staff member that would be there earlier than 7:15, that would be there at 7. And I'm going to throw his name out there, Mr. Settle has helped us with that this year already. Um, he's already, um, coming in early. He coaches basketball, or I'm sorry, he coaches baseball and football. So it's kind of a trade-off, you know, if there are days that he needs to leave a little bit earlier, he's banked some extra time with us in those mornings. So, uh, I didn't really know until last week or the week before. He's not much of a morning person himself. I thought he was just quiet. He's always quiet, so, um, but he's, he's willing to cover that 7 o'clock time, and if he's not, I'm sure we can, we can figure that out for just two students. It wouldn't be a burden on us for that. Um, the other piece is being able to offer those families that were really struggling some after-school care, so that 1:30 to 2:30, so that their pickup time would stay the same. So right now they pick up between 2:30 and 3:00. Really, our pickup line is typically finished around 2:50. It's just the number of people that are picking up students that even create that long of a line. So, um, it would just be a shorter window. Um, 22 families, students, um, said yes, that they would take advantage of that. Four might need to, and one said sometime. Um, and then extended beyond that, the 2:30 to 3:00. So that 1:30 to 2:30, we could cover that with our instructional assistants because their day would actually be from 7:20 to 2:50 in the afternoon. Um, our typical everyday pickup would be 1:30 to 2:00 that the students remain in their classrooms. So just that 2 to 2:30, we would use our six instructional assistants to cover that time with those students. And we've talked, you know, with that small of a number, we could probably, you know, use just a couple of different classrooms, um, if teachers would be willing to let us use their room. Um, they'll be planning and doing other things, so sometimes, you know, we might have to juggle that around, or we could use the PE building for that small of a number of students. Um, so it really wouldn't add any time to an instructional assistance day, but if we did need to provide some additional after-care, or if we saw, oh, pickup takes longer than 2:45, and we start, you know, adding time onto their day, they are willing to work with us and they would be okay with trading some of their Wednesday hours for that extra time if they would need to use that on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So I have an exceptional staff. They're very, uh, very helpful, always, you know, willing to just step in and do what we need. So, um, I think, again, we could just cover that within the, within our school. And the last part of that, um, and that was only about six students that might need later than 2:30, so. Um, and then we had two students that might need an afternoon bus to take them home, so I know that Dr. Ballinger and Mr. Mitchell had spoken about that and, you know, the possibility of being able to provide that transportation. Um, she currently has a college student who provides care for them. And as we all know, once your college schedule is set for this semester, you can't just change it, even if you're doing virtual classes. So, so that was just the piece that she was working with, um, her babysitter, to see if she would be able to make that adjustment to pick up the students earlier or have them get off the bus earlier, or if we would need that bus to their house in the afternoon. Um, and then we have one student, one parent who works at Skyline High School that might possibly need a shuttle bus to Skyline High School, but she said if we could offer that 2:30 extended pickup, that most days someone else should be able to pick up her child for her. So, um, that, uh, pretty much covers it. Most of our responses after we were able to do that, so there were a few people, there were five families and 10 students that really none of the accommodations that I could offer would help them, um, just because of their special needs that they had. So for three families, five of those students, they said if this was approved, they would just make the adjustments and figure it out on their own, that what we offered wouldn't really help them enough. And for one family, two students, they would probably need to switch to virtual just because of childcare and the arrangements, pickup drop-off. That, again, it wasn't feasible for them. And one family with three students, they have a unique situation where she works night shift, grandma provides the care overnight, and they switch off in the morning. And right now it's just perfect timing, that mom, grandma gets them up, mom gets home, mom finishes it, gets them on the bus and gets them out the door. And she gets home, I believe she said around 7:45. So that would be past the time that the bus would be there probably. Again, we don't know the exact transportation schedule, so it might work for her. Um, worst-case scenario, she said that she might have to drop the students off at school, and they might be 15 minutes to 20 minutes late each day. And again, we could work with that family to do what we needed to do, um, to help them, so. And again, it might not be an issue when their bus schedule is created. Um, and just some of those final concerns, just a lot of people were concerned about those early morning hours, their child switching to being ready to learn at 9 o'clock to being ready to learn at 8 o'clock. And I can definitely appreciate that, um, and enough, just the idea of another change to their, to their schedule and to their life, even as a child. You know, that's a lot, um, to ask in this year. Some people, again, just difficulty with childcare and where, or transportation, and just that we're disrupting routines already in a difficult year. So most people were willing, you know, this is what's best for the greater good of our school community. They're willing to make those adjustments and work with us, but they do still have concerns that, um, I know the comments Dr. Ballinger shared with you, so that you could have a look at those. Um, I just felt that they were important because it is, each one of those is a student. And so, you know, I, I don't want to do them a disjustice by over-generalizing the parents' concerns. So I talked a lot. Any questions?
Very thorough, though.
Oh, good.
We, we, as a group, do appreciate all the hard work you and your staff put in. And, and the way you guys responded as a school via the students and the parents, everybody working very well together, and I can't speak from experience, that school does whatever it needs to do, so I greatly appreciate it, and I appreciate what you guys do, so. Any questions? No? Wow.
I think you covered it.
Principal Weyman, I think you laid it out there for us.
So if you do have any questions, obviously, Dr. Ballinger, Mrs. Rudisil, or you can reach out to me, and I'll try my best to answer those.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Weyman. And also, Mr. Chair, I have, uh, Mr. Mitchell here to, to talk about, you know, if, what would, you know, could be, what would be the process of maybe if we need to have that shuttle or for some of those families that maybe need that, that extended care to, to, you know, to 3:15, 3:20, to pick up a bus, how that would work out? And to maybe talk about bus times, what that may look like for families, so.
All right. Mr. Mitchell.
Regan. Hello. All about transportation. All AS roads. I tell you, I really, I've got to applaud all the hard work that went in because it generated a lot of data that helped us and honestly took a lot of the pressure off of us. The rerouting the whole county is enough of a challenge and then the thought of the other challenges of rerouting other stuff, but it really, it's minimal. And I think we're going to really see what transportation historically has always done is that we address that stuff on a case by case basis and we go after it. Unique problems often call for unique solutions. And I think we'll see a lot of that. Ride time wise, I think we may see a little bit of increase on some of the AS road students just because we're trying to do a little bit more with less. But I don't think we'll have any instances. I think I'd read one concern where they were worried about us, middle school and AS roads all riding together. At this point, we don't have that in the works. There may be, if there's a unique circumstance that requires a special drop off time, we may have to get a little creative with that. But general rule of thumb is now that's not the issue.
Looking forward, it looks like the concerns are the, the biggest thing that I see is the after school care, which I think would be a great asset to have anyway. And some of the children could get some extra tutor time in and get their homework done. So when they got home, they were free to get, you know, they'd do what they needed to do.
I think that resources is much better served at the schools. And I know, I know some other districts have addressed that with just longer bus ride times.
Right. And it is to be a lot of great. And it's only a handful of people that would need a ride home.
It's minimal. And even some of them, like the, like the pickup tonnage, for example, we take that case by case basis and again, we may find that I can invert that route and run it backwards and we get that student earlier than maybe what they're originally scheduled. So again, we're, we're pretty good at, you know, manipulating those things around to try to, you know, accommodate everybody the best we can.
Or you could probably use one of the little vehicles for a simple run.
If we be, we do have some sped vehicles out there and again, they're all around. They're Winchester everywhere, so we get creative.
Oh, yes, sir.
You drive a truck, right? You have a pickup truck, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
We can do that.
Six foot, you got a six foot bed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right. Any questions?
I have a comment. This is just another example of how the school staff works together. I have, I've only been on this board for a year and a month or so and I'm constantly amazed at that. And I just wanted to say that in public so that you guys know how we feel. The extra effort you took, Ms. Lehman, to call these folks that didn't respond, the support that you get from school board staff, I'm amazed and I'm totally impressed. Aaron, I don't know how you do it, okay? So I just wanted to say that in public, on the record, so that you guys know how we feel. And I think I speak for all of us on this. So congratulations on this year. You've done amazing work and thank you.
Anything to Mr. Mitchell?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Back to you. You know, that's, that's kind of where we're at as far as with, with the update on, on the surveys and with looking at making a move whether we want to with our middle school students. We know that studies show that being in the classroom is where learning occurs. And our current CIP data shows that at the middle school, we're struggling. And I think you, you know, you talk to your, your middle school principals and teachers and they know that they're struggling there. A lot of times that online learning, students at the middle school level, that they're not able to prioritize their time to make sure that learning is occurring. You know, at the high school level, it's difficult for them, but they're, they're able to do that a little better than they are at the middle school. You know, we would love to get our middle school students in four days a week like we have our elementary. But that just is not the case for us. You know, that comes down to staffing, it comes down to transportation, just the limitations that we have. And so the best solution that we have to, to try to close that learning gap, because right now, if we don't start trying to close a learning gap, it's going to take years on down the road to, to address the learning gaps that are going to occur this year. Or that are occurring this year, not just at the elementary school, but at the middle school and at the high school. Our goal is to educate and the best way to provide quality education for students is to make sure we try to get them in front of a teacher as much as possible. Unfortunately, for middle school, it would only be two days a week, but it would be two consecutive days. Yeah, I think that Ms. Lehman and her team has done a great job in trying to, to come up with options and plans to actually extend the, we're actually extending that day. Currently, they're nine o'clock to two thirty, which means parents can't drop off until eight thirty. Well, now we're going to say you can drop off from, from seven to eight. And now we're going to extend for, for certain families that really need the support, we're going to extend that from a one thirty to a two thirty, which was your original in time before. And on individual needs, we will, we will try to work with those families to try to accommodate those needs as best as possible. So we're really lengthening that time to try to support our families in that area. Do I like changing a school schedule right now in the middle of the year? No. But the only way to, to make sure, I, we have to do our due justice for all of our students, pre-K through twelve. And if there is the opportunity to get our sixth, seventh and eighth grade, which everybody knows, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, those three years of your life can lead you down one path or another path. Those, those three years are building paths, are building blocks into your high school career. And so making sure that we have those blocks in place and that we have the resources to support, you know, the only thing I can think of, you know, through the work with, with the team was as we, we looked at a lot of different solutions to try to make sure that we could have this. You know, we, we talked about buying additional buses. Well, they wouldn't have been here until, I think it was towards the end of April. Well, not just do you have, you know, now you have the buses here, you have, you know, the funding to do that, but you don't have the drivers now for those additional buses. And right now it's, it's kind of hard and I think Mr. Mitchell could tell you, it's about a two month wait or three month to get your, to get somebody through the DMV to get their, their certification. Is that correct?
Or at least a month to hang up just to get your burners, just to apply your burners and that's, and you still have to go through a process and then you need to go back and actually do your math. That's a while, but it's, it's a pretty good.
So there's a, there's a long lead time going through those other solutions to try to, to make this happen. You know, I, I hate that, you know, we, we would have to change the school schedule, but within the confines of where we're at, this is the best solution that we could all come, come to the conclusion in order to, to try to get our middle school students two days a week.
You know, I agree with you that change is tough for everybody. I mean, nothing worse than having to change your life. But this past year, 2020 has been nothing but changes for everybody in the United States and around the world. But it's, to me, so imperative that our children sit in front of a teacher. You know, that's where they really get the buckle down and they have a question they can ask, the teacher can see what's going on, they can work together, it helps them grow and whatever. I think as a board, we need to discuss, you know, how, how do we get that extra day in? You know, I know, I know, Mr. Wells, y'all were giving vaccinations today and I don't know how many today. I think, Dr. Ballinger, you said everybody in the school system that wanted the first has received it?
Yes.
So then you have to wait a two week window before you get the second one. Is that correct?
It's a three week.
Three weeks? Okay. So we're looking at what, the end of February, probably, when?
When you would have the full effect.
You'd have the full.
After the second day. Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I feel for the parents that the, that it's tough on them to change the AS roads and have all that. But I do appreciate their response of we'll do what we have to do for the greater good. And that's, that's really shows what the community is about. So with, with all that said, I guess around the, the last week in February, the first week in March, with the vaccinations completed and the wait period for it to be in full effect, we're looking at the first of March. So that would do us what, March, April and May, that the students would actually get an extra day for three months. So that's got to be worth some, something to, to the students, I would think. So I, I don't know your all's feelings and what you think is the right thing to do or what direction we need to take.
Well, I agree. They need to be back in the classroom and not just for the education. I mean, sometimes many of our students, that's the only place they go to get their two meals a day and feel safe, so.
I had a comment two days ago today and I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. It said, you know the difference between us having our children stay at home and somebody in solitary confinement is, is at least the child has better living conditions. You know what? There's a little truth in that if you really boil it down and look, the guy or gal that's stuck in solitary confinement, they don't get to talk to anybody or see anybody. The children are so removed because they don't live close enough that they can see a friend or whatever, so they're always on a phone or on a computer and when they go to school, they're on the computer. So the, that's all that social interaction, just that togetherness, that, that they bond. And, and I think our children grow a lot by being around other students, the teachers and everybody in the whole system, whether it's a bus driver. I mean, Mr. Banks used to know everyone by name, didn't he? And he, he talked to every one of them. And you know what? Some of those little children were just so excited. Or not excited the next year when he was on a different route. So because they build that rapport and I think, I think the children need that. That's, that's what they, they need to be, feel like they're wanted and they can just interact and have a conversation about whatever. So I think, I think we need to move to two days a week for sixth, seventh and eighth graders as soon as we can to, to help, help them get ready for next year because that's about what we're, we're going.
And, and Mr. Chair, that, you know, when you look at the, the two days a week, it would, it would be consecutive. It would be a Monday and a Tuesday. So I would be in front of that teacher two days in a row. And at the middle school level, their, their, their class periods are a little bit longer. So that means, you know, I would, when you look at the, the high school, they're on the sixth period day, fifty, fifty-five minutes, I believe, forty, fifty to fifty-five minutes. Well, now at the middle school, I'm in that classroom and at one, it's still ninety minute or eighty-five minutes. So now there's time for that remediation to, to occur. There's, there's time for a lot of that to go on with those students that need that support. And, you know, as I presented at the board meeting at the beginning of January is that, you know, my recommendation is still to, to move to two days a week, you know, with, with our middle school students because I'm seeing the results from our benchmarks that that's guiding us to that. So when you look at the grand scheme of things, accreditation is, is a priority. Now, this year accreditation is waived, but next year accreditation probably will not be waived. For those middle schools, it could be a very big challenge for them next year because of the learning gaps that, that have occurred this year to meet accreditation based on the SOLO schools and students. And so, you know, our goal is to educate children. And I don't think that I would be doing my job and I would, that I would actually be doing a disservice to the students if I did not recommend increasing the days at the middle school.
I agree with you, I do too. Any other feelings on the board?
I think they've all worked really hard to do exactly what we had as a plan from the beginning to try to assess the situation and get students back as soon as you can think we do right.
So I have a motion. And I, and I guess maybe.
We're talking about the first of March.
First, yeah, let me, let me pull my camera up.
I think, I think a lot of our teachers would feel more confident coming back once they've gotten their second vaccine at the time.
Oh, yeah. I think you gotta wait for the second.
Yeah. And we've waited this long.
Yeah. Yeah. Another couple of weeks.
Another couple of weeks.
You're responsible.
Ain't gonna make us a breakers. The first Monday after all the waiting period is March one. So I would assume that would be, you know, because I don't want to start in the middle of the week because we'd have, we'd have one, one set of children wouldn't get the full two days, others would.
Yes, that's correct.
So, so I guess.
March first would be a good time. That would give, I want to give parents plenty of leeway to, to make adjustments. I want to give teachers plenty of leeway to make adjustments. That's why, you know, when I first presented, it was to try to give a month. Actually, by pushing it to March, you're actually giving a little over a month period for these adjustments to be made. So, you know, you're looking at four weeks instead of a, or maybe even close to five weeks instead of a.
Five weeks.
Yeah. So, so that, that is a good lead time, you know, for us to try to get all of what we need to do from a teacher standpoint, from a school standpoint, from a transportation standpoint, but then also to allow those parents to, to reach out to Ms. Lehman and to Aaron and, you know, and or to, to be able to make a plan. Yes, I know it's an inconvenience and I do apologize about that, but this gives them time to, to look at that and to, to try to come up with.
I, I agree. So we're looking at March first, middle school students, one extra day. So we'd have a Monday, Tuesday and a Thursday, Friday.
Yes, sir. A, A, B, B schedule.
Okay. Anybody here that's trying to offer up that question?
I moved that we set March first, 2021, as the date that we will have our middle school students start back to days a week.
I'll second that.
Mr. Valentine, could you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dr. Pence?
Yes.
Mr. Rinaldi?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much.
Can I just add something?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure, Mr. Hirsch, I'm sure that you're aware, the, the folks who got their shot today, the date for them to come back is February tenth, that's a Thursday. So we may need to make some accommodations. You know, today was, was a, was a great day because it was a virtual day, but we may need to consider making that particular Thursday a virtual day.
Yes, sir. And I know I spoke with Mr. Farrell today and he was going to let me know which day we needed. He told me that Wednesday, the tenth or the eleventh. And I am, and we have already had our discussion at Central Office that if we need to do a full virtual day for our teachers to finish their round, then we will try to do that in advance. I just asked him to give me enough advance so that I can get the notice out to parents that that would be a whole virtual day. So, so they are scheduling for the eleventh, so we need to go ahead and get that information out. The plan for the eleventh to be our, a virtual day for, for the county so that teachers can get their second round.
Very valid point. It's what I was thinking. Good. Okay. That's good. Next up is our physical 2022 budget information. Dr. Ballinger and Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, it is definitely that time of the year and this is the fun time of the year. You know, we get to, to look at everything and, and see where we're at. I have provided you with our twenty-one, twenty-two budget priorities. I have provided you with our 21, 22 budget priorities. As you can see, our first priority is, we really want to look at the salary scales and the years of experience for our instructional assistants, administrative assistants, head secretaries, secretaries, automotive specialists, speech nurses, and social workers. Yep, those were areas that were not addressed in last year's approved budget when teachers, when the teacher pay scale was adopted and everything was adjusted then. But then, we would also like to look at our steps for employees that are on the following pay scales. We're not going to adjust the salary scale, but look at getting individuals on the proper step, so we'd just be moving them to the step that they should be on, and that would be your grade 18 bus drivers, administrator 1, 2, and 5. We also want to really focus on our insurance benefits, on how we can give back, because we know there is a reduction this year and into next year from moving to Etna. And so, we want to also try to give some of that back, if we can, to our staff members to where there's a, the premium that they pay each month is reduced, you know. What can we do there? How can we make that happen? So, we want to really look at our insurance benefits. There are some SOQ positions that we have to look at with our guidance counselors right now. I think with the reduction of students, we fall, we are okay with our guidance counselors, but if we jump back up with the students that we have lost, and those students come back in, then to meet the SOQ, we may have to increase by half or one guidance counselor across the division to meet the standards that the governor sent forth, and I believe it's 325 to 1 with your guidance. So, but other than that, I've just listed kind of a priority of areas that we would like to look at as far as when we move into our budget, and you know, as we, we've talked about the English language learners, the criminal justice, that is a program that we would like to start at Blue Ridge Tech. We see a lot of benefit in that. So, just moving down through, this is all personnel, and I'm not going to read them all, the numbers to the side, that's really the number of schools, so that would be positions. Some of those, we could actually look at some of the instructional positions or other positions that we're using with replacing certain salaries or positions that were not filled this year and reallocating them into different areas to make sure that we can fill some of these needs. On the second page, you're going to see facilities. Of course, you know, we have our LFK, remodel HVAC. Our plan is to use some of our federal, use our federal funds that we just received to help cover the cost of that. And then, of course, we have other facilities, different repairs, cafeteria, classroom, cafeteria furniture, physical education. There's one thing that, you know, outdoor speakers for elementary school, that may be something that we also put into a security grant next year, because one of the things that, within our budget process with principals, they were telling us that sometimes when teachers are outside, it's hard to hear the radiators, and so, they would like to have speakers for, in case there is a lockdown, so that those teachers could get the students in. So, that was brought up by quite a few elementary schools, and so, those are certain things that we're going to look at, trying to, that may be addressed now, but also, if we can't, then add that to where we can address that in the future. But then, of course, when you look also at other areas that we need, we want to finish out our textbooks. We know that there were some that we did not get filled, there were some that were on the cycle for this year that need to be adopted for next year. You just approved for ESL to look at a curriculum for that population. But then again, our buses, buses are important. You know, they travel a lot of miles, and right now, our fleet is in need of some love, so, you know, that is high priority as well. And I will tell you that on that, Mr. Mitchell actually just pulled down the EPA grant for buses, so he's going to start working on that grant to see if we can qualify and actually be able to get some reimbursement to reduce the cost for purchase of buses through their Clean Air ESL Act. So, we have some other things in line as far as working to try to work this out with our buses, but then you can just see, this is just our list of things, but, you know, as we, as we work through our first priorities of fixing the scales and getting individuals on the right step, then we will go into these other areas as needed. So, I think that that's a pretty good start as far as for this year, moving into the budget, and it's, I'm hopeful for where we're going to be when we move into next year, if we go through this cycle. Things are looking promising, as they were last year, I understand, and then things went south. You know, with all school systems in Virginia, things are looking very promising. You know, things are still looking pretty good moving into next year, and I will let Mr. Valentine talk about that side of things.
I'll cut here so everyone can see. I think they probably want to do that.
Thank you, brother.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you want to, each of you should have this handout at your place, and for those in the audience, there are copies back on the table if you would be so interested in having one. The first page, you'll notice there's a school bus on there, and that's actually a paid advertisement. Mr. Mitchell said he pointed the school board, anytime you talk about budget, to think school buses. So, he actually faked to have that advertisement put on there. But seriously, the next page is actually the calendar of the General Assembly, which our state budget and state funding is a very important part of what we're able to do. I just highlighted a couple of things on there. The first being that the General Assembly convened last Wednesday at noon, and they have been working since then. Next, or this Friday coming up, they will need to have, all bills and joint resolutions need to be filed, so all the bills that they will consider need to be in by then. When you go to February, on February 5th, Friday, each of the House and the House of Delegates and the Senate each need to complete work on their own legislation, except the budget bill. That's what we typically call, I think, crossover day, when the bills go from one body to the other for them to approve. Then on Sunday, the 7th, is when the budget bill is supposed to be complete, and then Thursday, February 11th, would be the day that the General Assembly, that's their 30th day. This year is their short session because it's the second year of the biennium, so instead of being a 45-day session, this is supposed to be a 30-day session. But we know they're having years where they do not meet that deadline, and it goes on, so we're hopeful, though. It certainly is very helpful to all localities to have their budget known that by that time, so we're hopeful that that'll happen this year. So, one of the important factors that drives our state revenue is our average daily membership. That's the membership from the first day of school, the average membership through March 31st. And what I've done is give you a chart here each year, and we just add another year to it, and it's a graphic representation of what our membership has been over the last 20-plus years, with every year except the very one on the right there, this current year, 2021, being actuals, and the one for this year is actually a projection. And right now, I think at the end of December, we were just over 5,000, so we have, as school opened and gone on, we have grown some, but as Dr. Ballinger mentioned, this really points out that if we bounce back up to where we were last year or the last several years, that may necessitate the half guidance counselor and some other considerations probably from that, and, you know, I think hopefully that once things get back to normal, we will see the students come back. You have any questions? I'll be glad to answer them. Then the second page, or the next page, rather, is what our current budget is, and I'm focusing mainly on just the left half of the page, which is our state funding. The right half would be our federal miscellaneous and county appropriation, which just for illustrative purposes, I've left that level funded. That will change, and we'll update you on that, just to see what impact the state funding has. And if you just jump down to the very bottom of the left side there and compare what we've been approved by the state for this year and what the governor has proposed in his budget for next year, it's just over a million 300, well, no, it is a million 336,410. A good chunk of that, in the second category coming down under incentive programs, is the no-loss funding at over a million dollars, and that's funding to hold us harmless as a school division for the loss in membership, because if you see up in the first part there, the SOQ programs, which most all of those are driven by membership, we lose a good bit, stand to lose a good bit of money because our membership has, is less. Now, we're not the only ones, I think probably almost every other division in the state has experienced that same thing, and that's why they're wanting to address that, and that would be extremely helpful, not only for next year, but for this year, for our budget. One thing that is included in there under number two there on the left is an incentive program, and these are called incentive programs because we're supposed to participate in them at some level, and one of those is a bonus payment, a 2% bonus payment, which would give us $320,000 towards that bonus payment. It would need to be a 2% bonus payment, and then we would have to come up with the match, so that's not all free money, so to speak. There are expenses that would be associated with receiving that money. I think I've heard discussions where, after the governor presented this back in the middle of December, he may be wanting to modify that or encourage that to be changed from a bonus to just a salary increase, so we'll just have to watch the House and Senate bills and see what comes out of those two bills to see if it's, well, hopefully, there'll be something included, whether it's a bonus or whether it's maybe a salary increase that would be more permanent for our employees. And then the last page I just provided, that's the actual template that breaks out the state funding and how the different, the different areas, and there's a little bit of an explanation of footnotes in the back. That's just for your, if you're ever interested, want to look at it or whatever, to get a little better understanding of how the state comes up with our funding and what they see as our local share, what our required local effort is to meet what the requirements of that. Glad to answer any questions you might have about any of the budget information at this early point in the process.
And again, we're early in the process. We met with each of our principals and directors a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Valentine, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Shepherd. That's the team, we had those budget meetings and discussed needs at each school and within each department, and we're scheduled for a public hearing first weekend in February, and so, then, once we kind of see where the crossover bills are, kind of, the other night, we're not as, you know, we're currently working on, you know, number one and two, as far as trying to figure out those pay scales and try to get projections of what that cost would be, where then, we can just start plugging those in as we move forward with a final dollar figure.
Anything else, Dr. Ballinger?
Yes, sir.
Saying nothing else before this board, may adjourn.